The Falls Township 2018. We'll begin with the salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Gallaway?
Here.
Mr. Brasky?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
Mr. Dent?
Here.
Mr. Rocco?
With the record show Mr. Rocco had a family commitment unable to be here with us. We had an executive session before our meeting tonight. Mr. Clark, can you give us a summary, please?
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. During the executive session, the board discussed two collective bargaining agreement negotiations, various personnel matters, and two matters of potential litigation.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna start off our meeting with a couple of nice presentations. And Officer John Jaeger is here. A lot of people will know Officer Jaeger from Dare Graduations, which he does a lot of, and also from the the Youth Police Academy, which he really has pioneered. I saw in the paper today or yesterday, the Bristol Township is now resurrecting theirs. So I think, you know, as usual, people are chasing after us, trying to, you know, trying to be better than Falls. Keep trying, but yeah. So welcome Officer Jaeger. Come up to the microphone.
So first off, thank you, gentlemen, for allowing us to come in tonight. I'd like to introduce Marty McLaughlin, also his wife Linda Stout. They have a presentation, and then I'd like to say a few words after that, if I may.
Sure.
Great to see everybody again. Another year, little bit of money to drop off. So, you know, we were really excited about the event, although we had, I think, 200 less participants in the event this year. But what we lacked in participation, we really did not lose in generosity, because at the end of the day, we only fell about $200 short of the amount that we were able to raise for the Police Academy last year. And I have to give a shout out to Dr. Eric Abrams from Levittown Family Dental, who kicked in enough money to help us not only make that number, but pass it by about $300. So we're able to donate a little bit more money this year than last year, which is great. And, you know, we have a plan for next year to do things a little differently. I think the 5K is awesome, but it's not something that everybody really wants to do. So our plan for next year is to do something at Falls Township Park, something a little bit larger in a group workout setting, and bring in a little bit more vendors, and try to bring some more people out and raise some more money. But we loved having the opportunity to do it again. Thank you for letting us do it. And we're gonna hit it again next year, so. We're gonna try to get a photo here with our big fat check and move on.
You wanna come up here, or?
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
I guarantee that all six of these pictures are Pete's face.
So, and just before you speak, Mr. Jaeger, was another sort of announcement I want to let Mr. Brasky make?
Not stunning thunder, I appreciate that. But I felt it was fitting tonight. I know we spoke back in the beginning of the year about our touch truck event at the Tajah Paltz. And tonight, we talked to Pete, and we're gonna transfer into the budget a thousand more dollars from the proceeds of the touch truck and the donations into the Youth, Citizens Youth Police Academy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brasky. Thank you. So if I may, I just want to thank Marty and Linda. It's an awesome partnership that we have. And the Fallsington 5K was a really nice event. Again, there was a lot of people that did come. And fortunately, it was $5,600 that they were able to raise to offset the cost of buying all the uniforms and whatnot for the cadets when they come. So currently, we are, I'm still accepting applications. If anybody out there is watching this on TV, and they have a high school age student that is interested in law enforcement or the military, they are more than welcome to sign up. I'll take applications until July 6th. We are starting July 11th. I currently have 44 cadets that have signed up. There's four primary things to get in. The person, the student, has to go to school. They can't be late to school. They cannot be a discipline problem, and they have to try their best. And then on top of all of that, I do have a mandatory parent guardian meeting for all first-year cadets. I'm not gonna make everyone else come back, because they have the first three years. So it'll just be for first-year cadets. The parents have to come in. They have to listen to what the curriculum is going to be, and take an interest in their children's lives. So a lot of times, in my, I'm in my 33rd year, I see a lot of times that parents don't set aside the time to be with their kids. So we make it a mandatory meeting that they have to come in and listen to what they're gonna do with their children. So I want to thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And obviously, thank you to Marty and Linda for all the work they've done the past couple of years. You know, not just with this, but, you know, I think Dare Graduations and your involvement in the community is really, you know, phenomenal. We really appreciate everything you've done. Officer Jaeger, this has really been your baby. I know you were getting inspiration from police departments in New Jersey that were doing something similar to this. But to bring it here, it's been a tremendous success. You know, people keep coming back. I see one of your, one of your junior counselors there, sitting right behind you, you know, who's, right, who's helping out, I think, right? He was last year's, yeah. But, and as I said, you know, invitations is a serious form of flattery. So now you have Bristol Township looking to resurrect theirs. And is Ben Salem doing one? Or I hear they were thinking about one, or?
Uh, no, they were doing a Citizens Academy.
Okay. Okay, so yeah, they're doing the Citizens Academy. And for Mr. Brasky, the touch-a-truck event, second year, is a great event, a great success, brings out, you know, a ton of people. Little kids get to see the big vehicles and climb around on stuff. And we had a helicopter from the Coast Guard there, as well as a couple of vehicles of theirs. That was a, that was a big, big, big attraction. So thank you for everything that you did in pioneering that and getting it off the ground. So. And it, again, goes to a good cause. So, okay? Thank you very much. All right, so we didn't have anybody else sign up for public comment, so we'll move to item two, which is consider awarding Township Insurance Policy for the period of June 18th, 2018, to June 19th, 2019. Mr. Gray?
Township received a quote for insurance from Vaughn Insurance Managers regarding the upcoming insurance proposal for the period beginning June 18th, 2018, through June 18th, 2019. The quote we received was from Travelers Allied WNC First in the amount of $311,248. Travelers has provided insurance for the township for 11 of the last 16 years. Last year, the township paid $301,244. If the township were to choose, this would result in a 3% increase over the prior year. This dollar amount does come in under the 2018 budget, which is $326,000. In addition, this dollar amount is lower than what the insurance premiums are for neighboring municipalities. The board has asked to consider this proposal from Travelers. In addition, Mrs. Christine Vaughn from Vaughn Insurance Managers is here for any questions you may have.
All right, questions for Mr. Gray or Mrs. Vaughn?
No, I just see the costs are actually less anywhere, what, three and four years ago?
Yeah.
Yes.
It dipped lower than it's, you know, it came up a little bit, so. I'll ask Mrs. Vaughn if you don't mind, just one question.
Everyone?
So just give us an idea for people at home wondering why we're paying $311,000. What is, what are we covering here with this policy?
We're covering all the property. This cover calls any liability and any defense we might need, and in any kind of legal, legal and situations at all, we cover the defense. One thing about this program is deductibles are low, so we like that. You're not spending a lot on deductibles as well. So it covers legal defense. We do have a whole sheet of coverages. It would be all the, all the properties, cyber liability, general liability, law, law enforcement liability, employment practices liability. So anything that anyone would have difficulty with, we try to get the most coverage that we can, especially for, for our township.
And it's a 3% increase. Is that normal? Is that lower than normal? Is that?
It actually is a pretty good rate at this time. They did come in a lot higher. We negotiated. And because we had marketed to seven carriers, we were able to negotiate that down to the 3%, mostly in the auto and also in the package. And when you do have some things, you know, if there was any kind of loss at all, which some things you just can't, you know, help it swind or storm, those kind of things, that comes against the lost ratio. So we're doing pretty well with that, so. We felt like it was a good quote.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any public comment? See no hands. Okay. Is there a motion in to award the Township Insurance Policy for June 18th, 2018, to June 18th, 2019, to Travelers for $311,248?
Some move.
Seconded.
Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Gallaway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Okay, item three is consider gym memberships for Retro Fitness for the Falls Township Police Department for the year 2018-2019. Mr. Gray?
Retro Fitness has agreed to provide gym memberships for the Falls Township Police Department. These memberships are purchased to satisfy the contractual agreement with the police. With this offer for the membership, the township fulfills its contractual obligation with PAFT, and will not be required to provide the $100 stipend per Article 14, Section 5 of the Collective Bargaining Agreement. Thirty-two officers had interest in joining. The board has asked to consider the purchase of the gym memberships with Retro Fitness in the amount of $3,200.
Okay. Comments or questions?
No.
And there are some police departments that actually, their, one neighboring municipality actually has a gym in their building, in their police department, in their township building. And that was something that, in talking with them, as we were talking about doing some renovations here at our building, or building a new one, it was one of the things that we were told, "Don't do that." It's just liability reasons, it's very, very high, and it just, it's actually just much, much cheaper, you know, just to, in this case, $100, and police officers can go to, and again, we want to make sure it's a local, you know, live here, spend here, a local business. It's getting, getting the township money, and the police officers can go there whenever they choose. So. Any public comment, questions? See no hands. Okay.
Just one. Pete, do you know if, so like if we have officers that decide to go to the gym, like later on, can they still, was this a one-time signup thing?
Yes. In the past, there have been stragglers, maybe one or two, from time to time, and we've signed them up. But it doesn't happen that often. They usually sign up.
And also, you consider new hires that might, you know, new hires, because, so. All right, is there a motion then to purchase 32 gym memberships from Retro Fitness in the amount of $3,200?
Yes. Seconded.
Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Gallaway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Okay, item four, consider reauthorization for advertisement for tree trimming and removal of ash trees in Falls Township. Mr. Gray?
The board has asked to consider reauthorization to advertise for tree trimming and removal at the Township facilities in 2018. This is necessary to, to the Emerald Ash Borer killing the ash trees. We have identified dead ash trees in our parks that will need to be removed, and we anticipate identifying more later this year. The board has asked to consider reauthorization to advertise. In addition, Mr. Lawson from Public Works is here for any questions you may have.
Okay. All right. Is the board interested in hearing just about the process here with how this is gonna work, or are we just?
I was kinda curious if we can just go over maybe things that weren't covered in the first bid and why we're reauthorizing.
Okay. I know the one time, we did look at this, and I think Mr. Gray actually had, was ill and wasn't able to be here, and I kind of threw everything off a little bit. So Mr. Lawson wants to talk about the process, what the procedures are either gonna be in terms of how this is gonna work, identifying trees and making sure the right ones get cut down, et cetera.
What we did was, we went out to the park with the Shade Tree Commission, identified a lot of ash trees that were dead, with other ones that are dying because of the ash bores. We decided to go out to bid. Some complications happened at that point, and we were gonna readvertise. Things fell a little bit, and then we decided we were gonna do it another way. But, you know, from the advice from the solicitor with the auditing process and stuff like that, didn't want us to get in any trouble, figured that we should just reauthorize to go out to bid. So, you know, that way we don't have any problems. We're basically gonna do the same thing, go out to bid. We wanted to keep it at the same or close to the same as the first bid, so that there was no legal issues with the readvertisement from companies that had already bid on it, saying, "Hey, this is totally different than what you put out before." So that's one of the reasons why we're close to the way it is still. But as soon as we authorize a bidder or a contractor, we're gonna have them come right out, start on a community park right away, get the trees trimmed up, get the ash borer trees cut, and, you know, out of liability on our part, save on our insurance. But, yeah, the community park's gonna be the first place that we go to. We also have the Quaker Penn. We have the grant for clearing all that. That is the second place that we're gonna go to and, you know, get some of the dead trees out of there for that. So.
Comments or questions?
No.
Yeah, so I guess my question was really, are we still bidding hourly rates or day rates, or?
We're still bidding hourly rates instead of day rates and half-day rates, because of the first bid being bid that way, and.
The first day, the first bid bid what way? By the day?
By the hour.
Oh, by the hour?
By the hour.
As was, I guess, my main question. Now we're bidding by half-day and a day?
No, we're still bidding by hour. We're still bidding the hourly rate.
So what's the change between the first bid, the first bid and like that we're reauthorizing now?
The issue that we had was with the bond issue, and that is more clarified on how they have to do their 10%, hopefully.
So Lauren, is that the main change in the, why we're readvertising is the bonding?
That's the main change. The original bid specs required either a bond for 10% of the bid price or submission of cash, I believe, in the amount of 20%.
20%.
And there was some confusion as to 20% of what? So now the new language simply requires a bond in the amount of 10% of the total bid. And that language, that specific language has to be in the bond, not a dollar figure.
And there was a.
Specific what they're bidding on?
Yeah, that's right. What's the total bid?
The total bid package is what the, the bond company will be insuring.
So in other words, the contractors, you're gonna give them a tour, basically, show them the trees have to come down?
We're gonna do a mandatory bid meeting. We're gonna do a tour of it. They're gonna give us their hourly rate and a amount not to exceed. So that's basically what they're gonna have to get their bid on, their bid bond on. And then.
So the bond is, the bond, is the bond on the do not exceed number or their hourly rate?
I believe it's.
It's gonna be on the do not exceed number. The problem we were having was that there, say that there's 100 trees in the bid specs. It may end up only being 98 trees, might be 105 trees, whatever it is. So it was difficult to figure out exactly what the bond amount was supposed to be on the original language. And one of the bidders essentially assumed one hour's worth of work and submitted the bond on that amount, which was obviously not what the intent of the specs was.
Now this.
So you're showing them, oh, go ahead.
This bid is only going to the end of this year. We have discussed with the other bids from other municipalities that pretty much mirror one another, that there's a day rate and a half-day rate. When we go out to bid next year, we're gonna list it that way. We just didn't want any problems with the bidders that already bid at this time saying, "Hey, you rejected it because of a bond issue. It was an hourly rate. We don't want to change the whole bid" and then them have some type of legal standing on why they got, if they don't get the bid.
I'd say go look, 'cause I'm confused. I don't understand what the bond is on still. I really don't.
That's my question. Are you showing them a specific number or of trees that they're cutting down?
I'm showing them a specific area. I cannot tell them a specific number. There will be a discussion of, after we do the area, that other trees may be included to have to come down. And I would say, you know.
So bottom line, they're gonna give, they're gonna give you the rock bottom number per hour, and the bond is gonna be on their hourly rate?
No, bond's on the not to exceed.
On the not to exceed number.
They're gonna take a look at what needs to be cut, and you know, and the hard part of this is not every, not every tree's gonna be, is the same in terms of cutting it down. Some trees might be in the middle of a bunch of other trees that are healthy. So now, it's much harder to cut down that tree that's unhealthy in the middle of a bunch of unhealthy ones. That's maybe, you know, 100 yards into a forested area compared to the tree that's right on the edge of the forest, that's not surrounded by anything, that's easy to cut down. And so you can't, you can't say, "Well, there's X number of trees. They all cost this much." They do have to kind of look and say, "All right, well, that's gonna be harder." I mean, it's very, very hard, I think, to try and figure it out for the, for the, for the companies. But I don't really know how else you do it.
Yeah, I mean, the, the companies, I mean, you guys, your work, you do time and material. Tree companies basically do a day rate and a half-day rate. So they may blow out 20 trees in a day. They might descend, depending on the size, only do eight.
I guess that's part of my problem, is like asking a tree company to give you an hourly rate's crazy. No one wants to give that up.
It's gonna be.
Even in our business, you know, like, you don't, like, we're gonna make any, not really make any money, you know?
It would be a tough process. And like I said, it is only for this year, and then hopefully we can revamp. We're just under the gun a little bit, that's all.
Which it's July, so which is also one of my issues, is that this is an awful lot of work to do for six months.
Well, you figure by the time you guys award in July, you're looking August, September, October, November, maybe five months.
I don't think it's really gonna make a difference if they're giving us a not to exceed number. I mean, they know that's the amount of trees they're giving us. They're gonna say it's gonna take 10 days or 80 hours?
Yeah, but they're bidding an hourly rate, you know what I'm saying? That's weird about it.
What if they're just gonna say 80 hours? I mean, I don't think it really matters to them.
Yeah, half, I mean, a half day is.
Well, they're not bidding, they're gonna bid on an hourly rate.
Yeah, well, same thing.
What they have to figure out, strange. They still have to, they still have to prorate out what that hourly rate's gonna be to be a not to exceed number.
So I don't think it matters if it's a day rate or an hourly rate, if they're giving us a not to exceed number.
We think it's gonna be X number of hours, even if they do it in a half-day or full-day format. If they're doing four, I don't, I'm assuming four hours or five hours for half-day, eight or 10 for a full-day.
Do they have to include that in their bid? How many hours is gonna take them to do the job?
No. No, basically, I'll meet with them. I will meet them on a probably, you know, a weekly basis and say, "We would like to go from point A to point B." And he's basically gonna tell me, "Okay, it's gonna take me three days. It's gonna take me four days." And then at that point, I'm figuring an eight-hour day.
So if no one's gonna reveal, like, I'm just asking questions. Like, if no one's gonna reveal the total number of hours, which I don't blame them, so I don't understand how they're getting the bid, or the bond. Like, they start to come up with a, like, you would think that it would be based on, like, "Oh, it's gonna cost us 80 grand." So the bond is based off the 80 grand.
So the bonding companies, and I think one of the bidders in the last round actually did submit a bond that just said 10% of the bid amount, and it didn't have a dollar figure in the, in that part of the bond. So it is possible to get that from a bonding company?
10% of the?
It just said 10% of the base bid amount. And that was what the bonding company was.
Which is an hourly rate.
Which was an hourly rate. We're also, I think we also put a provision in for a performance bond that they're gonna have to secure for, I forget what the bid, how much it was.
But the other thing with the hourly rate isn't just for the purpose of calculating how long it's gonna take to do all of this. The hourly rate is also valuable, because if, in the middle of doing all of this work, all of a sudden in Quaker Penn Park, somebody sees an ash tree that's on the verge of falling over, that wasn't in the original bid.
No, I get that. I'm saying that they're not giving a total.
They're giving a total not to exceed. We're not gonna, based on, based on the work we were asking to do, what do you think it's gonna cost to do all of these trees?
I thought I asked that already.
Yeah, they did, yeah.
They're giving, yeah, they're giving.
So they're gonna say, like, it's gonna cost $80,000 to do this job?
Well, they're gonna say not to exceed, say, $100,000. But we may never reach that $100,000 mark, because something may happen. I mean, anything can happen in a township where.
So they'd provide three things, right, an hourly rate?
Yeah.
And that, a do not exceed number, and then the bond based off the do not exceed number?
Yes.
And then, I mean, it may work out in our favor a little bit, because if we do have a tree, and we call them in and say, "Hey, listen, we have this tree that died." And, you know, they lowballed a number at, you know, whatever 100 and some dollars was, and it takes them two hours to do the tree, well, we just got them for $300 to take down a tree, where normally you would probably charge you $1,000. So we may make out. I know it's gonna be hard. It's something different. But like I said, it's only for the rest of this year. Hopefully, we can reconfigure the bid to more mirror the other townships. I feel it's better that way, because when tree bidders bid on Ben Salem, and they've been on Middletown, and they've bid on Bristol, when they come to Falls, they're gonna say, "All right, the bid's almost the same." So there's no questions. There's no, "Hey, you know, what's this? Hey, what's that? Hey, what's this?" You know, it was a.
And we don't have any provisions on how to extend it all in 2019?
I, not, not in the new one, only because.
Not in this, not in this package?
Not in this one. In the future one, I did bring up to Pete that possibly we could do 2019 with an option of 2020, 2021. You may get a company, you bring them in, they do great the first year. Second year, they do great the first couple of months, and then they go, and it's like, now we're stuck with them for another year. I mean, things happen, and, you know, it's tough, you know, with tree businesses are, you know, it's tough with, people go from this one to that one to this one. It's a tough business.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. All right, any public comment? See no hands. All right, so we're just authorizing, reauthorizing advertisement for the plan to trim and remove ash trees in Falls Township. Is there a motion to reauthorize advertisement?
Some move. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Lawson. All right. Item five is consider adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 170, Peace and Good Order, at Section 1, Acts Constituting Disorderly Practices. Ms. Gallagher was working a lot on this. I'll let her, I was gonna start talking about it, but I'll let you go ahead and take the lead.
Earlier this year, a bill was signed into law, which now permits the possession and use of fireworks within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
There was, which is my point, it's a bill passed into law by the, by Harrisburg, not by us.
By Harrisburg, correct. Not by, not by the township. Up until this year, they were strictly regulated and were not permitted in the Commonwealth, to be used in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. What this law, what this ordinance would do is essentially mirror state law and puts the provisions in state law and clarifies them a little bit into the Township Code. That way, it's easy access for our police department, as well as our code enforcement, as well as individuals in the Township to know what is and is not permitted. The large fireworks displays that are known as consumer firework displays are still, require a permit to be issued by the fire marshal. But smaller fireworks that are, I'm sorry, display fireworks are the large ones. The smaller ones are called, are considered consumer fireworks, and those are the ones that are now permitted to be used by individuals. They are not permitted to be used within 150 feet of an occupied structure, under the definition provided in both the ordinance and state law, that is essentially any building that has a valid use and occupancy permit. So it does not necessarily have to be occupied at that moment, but capable of being occupied. So large sections of the township, you're still not allowed to set off these fireworks. Possession is now legal in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, though, of those particular types of fireworks. So again, this is an ordinance that essentially mirrors state law. A violation of this ordinance or the state law would subject the individual to a punishment by a fine not exceeding $100 per violation. And that is in both the state law as well as the Falls Township ordinance.
All right, so essentially, you can't discharge a firework on any public or private property within 150 feet of any occupied structure. And again, as your definition doesn't, that doesn't mean that, "Well, my neighbor's not home, so it's not occupied." No, 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 no. It's not, wrong. No fireworks may be purchased, possessed, restored, used or stored by any person under 18. No fireworks or pyrotechnic device should be discharged within, out of, or toward any vehicle or building, or directed at any person. Nope. No fireworks or pyrotechnic device should be used by any person under the influence of alcohol, controlled substance, or drug. So it's a pretty, and this, we're coming up on July 4th, you know, and we've already gotten some complaints from people lighting off fireworks on Memorial Day and, and other times. So pretty much any neighborhood, you know, fireworks have always been illegal now. You know, they'll think, "Oh, well, now we're allowed to have fireworks in Pennsylvania." Yeah, but you're still not allowed to set them off in any neighborhoods, anywhere in Falls Township. And there is a fine, and it's $100 per occurrence, which means if someone shoots off. which means if someone shoots off, you know, six fireworks, you know, on, on someone's street, it's, that's six, $600. That's, you're violating, you're not just violating it once because you're doing it all at one time, or all in one night. You know, it's every single thing you shoot off, you know. And obviously, it's a safety concern. We had an issue last year with a house that, you know, caught fire because people threw fireworks into, I think it was a carport, or was a garage, or a-
Carport.
Yeah, it was a carport. And it got the house on fire. Fortunately, nobody was home, but easily-
Burned their house down, though.
Yeah, yeah, it burned the house down. Obviously, it could have been, you know, a catastrophic event. And so that's something we want to make sure does not happen. You know, obviously, we haven't, it hasn't really been dry this spring, but we don't know what the summer's going to have. And so if we do happen to get a spell where it's, everything dries out, and all of a sudden now a stray spark, a stray bottle rocket lands in someone's gutter, and there's leaves in there, and now you've got serious problems. So this is a safety issue. It's not about, you know, not wanting to have fun, you know, and, or trying to interfere with people's good time. This is really just about living in, in a community where the houses are very close together, and nobody can really tell, once you set off that firework, where it's going to go, and whose house it's going to land on, or whose car it's going to land on, or what yard or person it's going to hit. You know, so it's, it really is a safety issue, so. Comments or questions for Ms. Gallagher? Lieutenant Plutnik's here as well, and if anybody has any questions regarding the police side of enforcement of this?
No, I just see that there was an exception made for the novelties, so people don't worry about that. If you have sparklers-
They, they are an exception. You can certainly, yes.
Snakes.
There's the novelty devices, the things you can buy in the drugstore, those are still-
You got it.
Still permitted.
That's what burnt down the house, though, was something they bought at the supermarket last year, was the novelty type stuff. So that doesn't mean it's not dangerous.
Right.
Means use common sense still.
Right, certainly.
Which you can't teach.
Any other questions, or?
Okay, thanks, Lauren, appreciate it.
Lieutenant Plutnik, do you have anything?
Is there any timeframe for when they can second walk?
Wait, all right, sorry. We do, but, let's open a public comment. Is there a motion to open public comment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Come forward, ma'am, just so you can get your, it's a good question, just come forward and, it's all right. We're all friends.
Tony Batiste. I was just wondering if there is a timeframe for which people can set off the fireworks that they aren't legally allowed to set off?
You mean in terms of, like, time of day?
Yeah, like, up till a certain time at night.
Well, there's-
Well, there's noise ordinance.
There's a noise ordinance, which would depend, if it's a weekday or weekend, kicks in. And so that would obviously violate the noise ordinance. So even if you are out in a field somewhere, not 150 feet away from anything, you know, I guess you could be setting them off as long as it's not after, was it, it's, I think it's 10 o'clock on weekdays?
10 o'clock.
Yeah, 10 on weekdays, 11 on weekends.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's a good question. Thank you. Motion to close public comment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You know, it's, actually, the question raises a question of mine, too. In terms of setting these off, if you're in a field somewhere, would you need the permission of whoever owns the field?
Yes.
I'd assume so, right?
Absolutely. If you're not the owner of the property, then you would certainly need the property owner's permission that would-
Why, were you setting them off?
Well, I'm thinking of, oh, no, I'm thinking of people.
I was thinking, like, well, there's new schools.
Right, I'm thinking, right, I'm thinking of people for, you know, that would go to, like, to a, to a field at one of the schools and just think, oh, well, I'm 150 feet away. It's school property, or township property that's-
Certainly. And the township can certainly prohibit the use of fireworks within its, its parks and its public, public areas, as can the school district. But they, the individual setting off the fireworks would certainly need the permission of the property owner.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, this will be ordinance 18-
02.
02. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1802?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item six is consider authorization for advertising amended, amending chapter, ordinance Chapter 184, sewers and water. Ms. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. As the board is aware, there, the township is currently revising its Act 537 Plan, which has to do with public sewers within the township. Part of what DEP has put together is a model ordinance addressing on-lot sewage control. And this ordinance would essentially enact a program for maintenance, installation, and ongoing inspections for on-lot systems. This would not affect a property that was connected to public sanitary sewers. This is only for essentially septic tanks and seepage pits.
All right, this is just authorizing advertisement.
This is authorizing advertisement, correct.
Okay. Comments or questions?
No.
Any public comment? Is there a motion authorize advertisement?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item seven is consider a change order number two for Falls Township Community Park Fishing Pier. Mr. Sullivan, you've been quiet.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Mr. Harvey, yes, change order number two for the fishing pier. The original change order number one, we had a reduction of the entire project by about $8,223. We then had an increase because we changed the surface of the deck to cedar, which added $3,600 to the project. And change order number two is for the handicap accessible rail. We had to add before you actually get onto the, the pier. And the total, that was $47,9500, giving us a increase of the original contract amount of $172.
So $172.
Mm-hmm.
Comments or questions for Mr. Sullivan?
No.
No.
Okay, any public comment? All right, so, not too bad. That's all the fishing pier, I know it gets used, you know, it's, it's a great addition to the park. Thank you for all the work you put into it.
Very popular.
Yeah, yeah. So, so $172 change orders. Or motion to approve change order number two for the Falls Township Community Park Fishing Pier in the amount of $172 to ABC Construction.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Okay, minutes for our last meeting. Comments, questions, corrections?
Excellent minutes, as always, Mrs. Pullen.
Is there a motion to approve to accept the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, back to Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you again, Mr. Harvey. For the report, I really have only one update. The 2018 rule program is now out to bid. There will be a pre-bid meeting on the 29th of June, and this bid will be scheduled for the 13th of July, unfortunately, Friday the 13th. But hopefully, that won't be a bad luck day for us.
You know what comes after Friday the 13th? Saturday the 14th. Worst movie ever made.
I agree with that.
Tradition in my house.
Notice of intent to war with the authorized Board of Supervisors at the July 17th meeting. After the contractor review period, we should be able to start toward the end of August. The program includes the remaining section of Walton Drive, all of Share Drive, and a short section of Lyons Drive in between the two.
Okay. All right, comments or questions for Mr. Sullivan?
No.
No.
All right. I did notice one thing. It's not a township project, but for people that might be interested, excuse me, there is going to be a tunnel. Have they started construction on it yet? Do you know?
We had a pre-construction meeting. If they've started, it's just to, you know, start clearing the site and getting ready for the tunnel.
Okay. And this is a tunnel that's going to go under the Conrail Railroad area for the Delaware Canal. Because right now, you can get on the Delaware Canal tow path, really right near the community park. If you park on the Weechee, or if you're in the Weechee Road side, if you take the walking path out of the park across Weechee, and, you know, you're traveling maybe 7,500 yards, and you get on the tow path, and you can actually take the canal tow path up into Marshville and eventually up as far, of course, as far as you want to go. But you, there are two spots where you have to kind of get off and, and walk around, and one of them is you're walking literally, you know, from me to Mr. Galloway, away from the, the railroad, you know, the Amtrak lines, which is, you know, is, you know, is fine, but, you know, not exactly the safest. So building a tunnel underneath there would, would really kind of, I think, make it much easier for people to use that canal pass. So I think that's, you know, that's a good project. I'm looking forward to seeing that.
How long is the tunnel, Mr. Sullivan?
I knew you would ask me that. I'm furiously looking through a report to find out if I have that number.
Yeah. As I said, it's not, it's not a township project, just something that's going on in the township that we're-
I'm going to say it's less than 100 feet.
Yeah, it's not far.
Probably closer to 60. Yeah, it's not, it's not a real long town.
It's not really a tunnel.
It's, yeah, it's a tunnel.
It's a definition, it's a tunnel. Tunnel's a tunnel.
It's underneath the canal. Yeah, yeah, yeah. A tunnel that goes underneath the, yeah.
I have some more questions for you. A new kind of way, right?
A new kind of way. Trying to keep it, you know, easy.
All right, is there a motion, any questions for Mr. Sullivan?
No.
Is there a motion to accept the engineer's report, which is dated June 14th, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, bill list. Bills this month are in the amount of $2,087,000, excuse me, $2,087,050.89. Of that roughly 2.1 million. About 1.6 million of the 2.1 is salary benefits, money that goes to Falls Township Library from taxes, money that goes to the rescue squads that serve Falls Township out of taxes, escrow money that comes from developers, and two state funds, highway aid and crime prevention, which are not town, are not Falls Township tax dollars. You know, so again, it's about 1.6 out of the 2.1 comes just in those couple items. Everything else is, you know, legal fees, electric bill, gasoline, vehicle parts, things of that nature. So comments or questions on the bills?
None.
Okay, is there a motion to, I'm sorry, any public comment? See no hands. Is there a motion to pay the bills? $2,087,050.89.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Okay, we had executive session earlier. Police report. Lieutenant Plutnik is here.
Good evening, everybody. Officer Jaeger took my first item, which was his youth police academy. He's still accepting applications for that. It's running July 11th through the 26th. It's a spectacular thing to see. If you go by it, even when the kids are out there doing their thing, it's really, it's really amazing to watch how much work the kids put into, to the academy. After that, the Citizens Academy itself, excuse me, is going to be starting the second week of September and runs through December. 10 to 12 weeks, depending on what kind of curriculum is put together and who's available to teach, to be honest. Applications for that are currently available online and through our records department. Coffee with a Cop tomorrow, June 20th, at IHOB. Not IHOP, IHOB. Lincoln Highway and Oxford Valley Road. It runs from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. You'll buy the coffee, but they'll run you no donuts there. And lastly, Officer Elmore and his canine partner, Monty, will be doing a short meet and greet at the Senior Center tomorrow at 10:00 AM. It's going to be a short demonstration, 15, 20 minutes maybe, just Officer Elmore and his dog, Monty. Monty's a really great dog. If you've never met him, he is probably my favorite dog out of all four. I shouldn't say that, but he's-
I've met my dog.
Yours couldn't pass the test for a police dog.
That's all I have.
All right, comments or questions for Lieutenant Plutnik?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, manager comment?
Yes, just a few items tonight. First one is in regard to several escrow releases the township has received for consideration of release. The first one is St. Joseph's Court, located at 9172 New Falls Road. The amount of this escrow release is $115,995.15. This is a letter of credit, release number six. Second one is McDonald's, located at West Trenton Avenue, in the amount of $5,280.93. This also is a letter of a credit. This is their release number one, also their final release. Next three are Metro PCS. The first one is located at 364 West Trenton Avenue. $621, that's a letter of credit. That's release number one, also their final release. The second one is 499 West Post Road. The dollar amount is $1,800. It's a letter of credit, also release number one and a final release. And the final Metro PCS is 275 Lincoln Highway, 1,00106. .15, this is a letter of credit, release number one, and again, the final release. Also, Morrisville Dollar General, located at 1279 Old Bristol Pike, $18,254.22. This is a cash escrow. And the final one is PEXCO, Custom Plastic Extrusions, 16 Progress Drive, $9,758.79. This is a cash escrow as well. Based on the inspections by T&amp;M Associates, they are recommending release of the dollar amounts per their satisfaction. The board has asked to consider those escrow releases.
Comments or questions for Mr. Sullivan regarding any of the escrow releases?
No questions.
No.
Okay. Someone had raised a question, actually through email with me regarding escrow releases, and there was some confusion. And so I just want to make, I think I say periodically, but not often enough, just to remind myself and remind everybody else. Escrow releases is not taxpayer dollars. Developers, when they come into the township to do a project, you know, have to put up a certain amount of money as escrow. That escrow allows us to cover the costs of our legal and engineering team when they're doing reviews and working with developers, so that is developer paying for the hourly rate for those professionals instead of Falls Township taxpayers doing it. Also, it covers inspections by the engineers, and it's also a way for us to make sure that the developers do what they say they're, they're going to do, because we're holding their money. So, and we release their money once they hit certain benchmarks in their project, if we're satisfied with what they're doing. And the engineer goes out, takes a look at what they've done. For some of these are final releases, which means that the projects are complete. It's been a couple of years, usually out of a maintenance bond period, so everything's done, project's done, no need for us to hold the money anymore. Then we can release it back to them. So, you know, because somebody had asked, it seemed like we're giving, you know, township money away for, to a business. It's, this is all money that they have to put up, and we hold, kind of as insurance, to make sure they do what they're supposed to do. So with that being said, is there a motion to release or pay off all of the letters of credit and escrow releases outlined in the June 11th, 2018 memo from Mr. Gray?
So moved.
Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
The following businesses, following businesses were approved to open operations in Falls Township during the month of May 2018. They include Pearls and Pampering by Orrenda's, 135 Trenton Road, Quality Moving and Transportation, 199 Canal Road, Ace Philadelphia, located at 8 Headley Place, CAC Tire and Auto, located at 41 Cedar Lane, Jones Engineering Associates, also known as JEA, located at 188 Lincoln Highway, Suite 206, and Right Image Hair Salon, 636 Lincoln Highway.
Okay.
I'd also like to announce that Silvy Mylars are ready for signature. And finally, I just want to announce that in the 2018 budget, the board approved a deposit of $2 million into the long-term restricted account. At this time, the finance department will be making that deposit, and actually, it'll be done later this week. So we should have roughly $32 million in this account.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for the manager?
No.
Okay. All right, board comment? Mr. Dent?
Yes. Back on June 1st and 2nd, we had our eighth annual Q for the troops. The weather forecast was really bad for the whole week. We canceled the family festival, and somehow amazingly, it didn't rain at all, until we were doing awards on Saturday afternoon, and everybody was cleared out. So it was a huge success. We raised a- I'm sorry. We raised a good amount of money this year. I think we're somewhere close to $15,000. I don't think we have all the, everything together yet, but it was our biggest event yet. I think we had 62 teams from all over. We had one guy from Tennessee calling every day to make sure it was still on, you know. So that was the farthest trip. But yeah, it was a great event, and we'll be presenting a check probably in, maybe August. That's all I have. Thank you. I have. Thank you.
Awesome. Yeah. Mr. Brasky?
No, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Galloway?
Just congratulations to Mr. Dent on the Q. I unfortunately intended to get down there, but I had all the relatives come in town because we had that wedding right at the house that weekend.
I know. You got lucky, too, right?
I would much rather, well-
The weather, I mean.
Oh, yes, yes, just survived. But good for you, and I look forward to next year coming down there. Thank you.
Yeah, that's definitely echo Mr. Galloway's comments. I mean, we've, you know, Mr. Dent really is the one who started the Q for the troops, and has, it's been tremendously successful. It's grown to where we're pulling people from all over the eastern part of the United States now to come here for this competition. Mr. Brasky, with the Touch a Truck event, which is just gonna keep getting bigger and bigger, was something that he introduced. Mr. Galloway obviously does all the work, or, not himself, but, you know, certainly is an integral part to the St. Patrick's Day Parade, which is a major part of what happens here in Bucks County. And want to thank all of them for all the work they do and everything they do to make, you know, Falls Township, obviously, but all the, you know, Bucks County in general, such a great place. Community Day was just this past Saturday. I know the turnout wasn't quite what we had hoped, but that's what happens sometimes when you reschedule things and people forget about it. I talked to people, you know, later on, like I say, after it was over, and people were asking, well, I thought I heard fireworks going off somewhere. Was that the Trenton Thunders? No, it was Community Day. And they said, oh, we forgot about that. We were gonna go to that. And it just, so it's certainly something we can, hopefully, you know, you know, that's what happens sometimes. And it was also a weekend right after graduation, so a lot of graduation parties, and people going on vacation, things of that nature. So, but thank you for, to Mr. Andrews and all the work that went in, Public Works and Park and Rec, all the work they did putting it together. I want to have a little note to myself here to wish a belated Happy Father's Day to all the fathers and grandfathers and stepfathers, and everybody who, who might act as a father to some, some young person here in Falls Township. I'm wondering now, and it's been such a long time, and because of our meetings being only once a month, I don't remember if I said Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers and grandmothers and stepmothers and people who act as mothers, but if I didn't, you know, it's a good thing to say it again. And, you know, we belated wish on those. First off, early Happy Fourth of July to everybody. Hopefully, it's a nice and safe one. Hopefully, we can, if you're traveling, make sure you travel safely. If you're gonna, you know, get together with friends and family, make sure you enjoy safely, and hopefully, we have good weather. And also, an early Happy Birthday to my friend, Mr. Dent.
Thank you.
Who's, I think, yeah, I think his, I think his wife, yeah, his wife says 52, is what she told me? No? Okay. So, Happy Birthday, Mr. Dent. And, no, somebody else here in the room is turning 50 later in July. I'm trying to think of who that is. Someone's sitting over between Mrs. Pullen and Mr. Clark. So, we'll make sure we celebrate that in, in July. So, we'll do, do something special, so.
Don't listen to that, Pete.
So, all right, and with that, I'll entertain motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.